We are having an organizational meeting to begin with. I'll call a meeting to order. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross, let the organizational agenda be accepted as presented.
Proposed committee organization and structure. Anyone has a suggestion or a change, or would like to stay in the committees they're in?
I am fine staying with the committees that I am presently with.
As am I.
Mike, are you good?
Yeah, I am okay with the committees I have.
I'm good.
Everything's cool.
We're good. Meeting dates.
Sorry, can I have a motion just to accept it, please?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson, let the proposed committee organization and structure be accepted as presented.
Meeting dates. All in favor. Thanks, Mike. Meeting dates, they're the same as they've always been, right? Do we need a motion for that? Counselor Meister, question?
Moved by Counselor Meister, that the regular, that the deputy, no. Moved by Counselor Meister, that the regular council meeting dates for 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Appointment of Deputy Mayor. We have that scheduled, correct? Could I have a motion to accept that schedule?
I'll make a motion to accept the Deputy Mayor's schedule as presented.
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer, that the Deputy Mayor appointments be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Annual motion, designated municipal office.
Yeah, so a few years ago, the town had a municipal accountability program review, and a couple of the items were pointed out by the review that the town was supposed to do annually legislatively, were required to, council rather, is required to approve or designate the town office, as well as the town's banking institution.
Do we need a motion for that, too?
Yes.
I've got a question. It might be slightly different. Generally, when we do the...
Mike?
Microphone.
And it might come later on. Generally, when we designate the bank, don't we generally do the credit card things at the same time?
Those are bylaws.
Oh, that's a bylaw thing? Okay, perfect.
We do those every year in December.
Okay. Thanks. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross, to designate 111 55th Avenue West in Clarets Home, Alberta, as the town's municipal office.
All in favor. Approved. Financial institution. Abe?
Same as the previous motion, just require council to designate our financial institution.
Which is?
Bank of Montreal.
Thank you.
I'll move that.
Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson, to designate BMO Bank of Montreal as the town's banking institution.
All in favor. Approved. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Kettles, question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles, that the organizational meeting adjourn at 7:05 PM.
All in favor. Approved. Onto the regular council meeting of October 28th. Call a meeting to order at 7:05. Adoption of agenda, could I have a motion if there's no additions or changes? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross, that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Motion to adopt the minutes from October 15th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes from October 15th, 2024 as presented.
Any questions or concerns about the minutes? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer, that the regular meeting minutes of October 15th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Delegations. Abe?
So, two delegations on the agenda tonight, council. The first is Rowan House, and we have a couple representatives from Rowan House to come and provide an update on their operations.
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Lynette Salden, and I'm the Executive Director, and this is Carly Marchbank, and she's the Program Lead for our programs, client-serving programs. Today, domestic violence and abuse are at epidemic levels. Rates of police-reported intimate partner violence and abuse experienced in rural areas is 75% higher than in our urban areas. On average, every 2.5 days, one woman or girl is killed in Canada. Abuse comes in many forms, such as intimidation, threats and control, financial, cultural, spiritual, medical, stalking and harassment. It is important to tackle the unfair assumptions, stigma and shame that have been attached to domestic violence and abuse for far too long. By supporting us in our endeavors to erase domestic violence and abuse, you're helping the communities we serve. We're here today to provide a short update on some of the supports we have available for the residents of Clare's Home, and how we can support you to make a difference for the people in your life or work who may be affected by violence and abuse. Our symbol is a rowan tree, commonly known as mountain ash. You may ask, why is the rowan tree our symbol? The berries often retained through the winter on the rowan tree symbolizes the endurance of life through the dark of the years, and the tree itself was said to afford protection to the dwelling by which it grew. The rowan tree has traditionally been associated with peace, sanctuary, privacy and beauty. The rowan tree embodies and symbolizes that we at Rowan House stand for, that every person is safe and secure and lives without violence and abuse. We are proud to report that we have actually several rowan trees in our front yard.
Rowan House, oh, sorry, I'll put that closer. Rowan House Society services the second-largest geographical area in the province with a total population of over 100,000 individuals. The area served our Foothills County, the MD of Willow Creek and Vulcan County. At Rowan House Society, we provide a continuum of trauma-informed programs and services to help break the cycle of domestic violence and abuse in our communities by providing crisis intervention, long-term support, and preventative education and awareness. First, our 24-hour support line provides telephone and texting responses to all individuals seeking crisis support, information, or navigation to the program or supports that best suit their needs. The 24-hour support line is available in multiple languages through Kentalk. For the April 1st, 2023, to March 31st, 2024 fiscal year, we responded to 2,294 calls and texts, a 15% increase from the last fiscal year. Secondly, our emergency shelter, which is a short-term 30-day stay for women with or without children, the emergency shelter has seven bedrooms with the capacity to support 24 individuals. Last fiscal year, we supported 220 women and children, which was the same as our fiscal year last year. Children are remarkably perceptive. Their eyes observe, their ears listen, and their minds process the messages they absorb. If they see us patiently provide a happy atmosphere, they will imitate that attitude for the rest of their lives. Children learn how to treat others by observing how their environment that surrounds them treats others. We have specialized children's programs that not only allow children to be kids again, but train staff to provide them with tools for understanding their own big emotions and strategies for coping and healing. Last year, we provided 2,398 hours of programming to children. The fourth program is a preventative education program, which strives to break the cycle of abuse by providing healthy relationship groups for women, and education and awareness for youth in the schools, as well as presentations for the public. We are pleased to offer lunch-and-learn workshops to anyone who is interested. Last year, we provided 125 presentations to 6,230 students, which was a 25% increase to the students. The fifth program is the outreach program, which is designed to address and meet the needs of all individuals, regardless of race, cultural, spiritual background, gender identity or sexual orientation, through one-on-one contact and support in a community setting. Last year, we supported 105 individuals, which was a 2% increase of individuals from last year, and indirectly impacted 150 children. The sixth program is the court support program, which offers information and support to clients by developing a better understanding of family law and protection orders while ensuring individuals are provided with wraparound support. Last fiscal year, we supported 84 individuals and assisted with 63 court orders. The last program, which was just introduced at Rowan House Society this year, is the Safe at Home program, which is designed to be an alternative approach to helping families experiencing domestic violence and abuse. The Safe at Home program outreach workers provide support to the individual that is causing harm by providing one-to-one support, group sessions, and an option to have access to our cooldown approach. We also have a data analysis, who ensures data integrity and that all of our work is truly having the impact we hope and expect. We have a facility and safety advisor dedicated to enhancing all of the safety for our staff members and clients. All of these programs are accessible and offered at no cost, thanks to the generosity of the community. We do receive an annual grant from the government, but it is restricted to specific programs. We haven't received an increase in funding in a decade since 2014. Everything else that we provide, we must fundraise through grants and donations. We are pleased to report that we did receive funds from the government of Alberta for our preventative education and Safe at Home program.
Our focus really is collaborating with the community. Since January of this year, we have attended or hosted 34 events. Our third annual golf tournament raised a record-setting of 48,000, and we just wrapped up our 12th annual music event, Rhythm is Rowan, just so you know, it's a fun event when we are interested. We have also formed many partnerships where we continue to work collaboratively to benefit all members of our community. Through these events and partnerships, we hope to increase awareness in the community so that everyone who needs support knows where to find it. We are pleased to advise that Rowan House Society will be honoring and commemorating our 25-year history in serving the communities of the Foothills County, Vulcan County, and the MD of Willow Creek in January 2025. So, how do we support Clare's Home? Last fiscal year, we provided four school presentations to 250,000 students in the Clare's Home area. We are pleased to report that we have partnered with Clare's Home Center for Mental Health and Addictions to provide healthy connection groups in Clare's Home, and that has been something that we have been super proud of, and we've been getting a lot of participants engaged in the process. 2024 has been significant to Rowan House Society as we entered a new chapter by implementing our three-year strategic plan with a renewed focus on helping to serve even more individuals impacted by domestic violence and abuse in our communities. At Rowan House Society, we will not stand by and leave individuals to face violence and abuse alone. Our clients will continue to be the heart of everything we do as we continue to improve our client service delivery, processes and systems, and ease of access to our clients to the different services that we provide. Every endeavor we take will be to develop new partnerships and build stronger alliances to further enhance our client service delivery. Our goal is to ensure we continue to reach individuals within our service area. We know that everyone's path to addressing domestic violence and abuse in their life looks different, which is why we have so many options to help, and why we're working to raise awareness about all those different options. Our hope is that after today's presentation, you have a better understanding of how to refer someone that may be going through and experiencing domestic violence and abuse if they decide to connect with you, and Rowan House is here to help and support through that process and journey.
We would like to end with a quote by Nelson Mandela, "We owe our children, the most vulnerable citizens in any society, a life free from violence and fear." Thank you for helping us shine a light on domestic violence and abuse in our communities.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. And so, we thought we would share our hope lantern, and so I'm just going to read a little bit about it, and this came from our children's program. I have to put my glasses on top of my head. Light unites people and brings light of warmth and belonging. It shines in their deepest darkness and shows truth. The truth we want to bring forth is that relationships are not a place for violence. Everyone deserves to feel safe emotionally, physically and financially. The lantern is a symbol of hope and a reminder that the ability to shine light on darkness is available to each of us. This lantern was created in our playroom, which is our children's program, and it reminds you of light illuminating darkness. There are two ways of spreading light, either the candle or the light that reflects us. Thank you so much for having us here today.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. You should be commended on a wonderful job. It's amazing that you do this work, right? We see it every day on TV, right? So, we appreciate you. We thank you for all you do, and look forward to staying in touch. Thank you.
Thank you again, we really appreciate it, and this will be here for town council. And because November 1st is Family Violence Prevention Month, so we would love that to stay with you. So, thank you again for having us tonight, really appreciate it.
Okay. Next delegation. Abe?
Next delegation is from the Clarets Home and District Museum and Museum Board, so we'll turn it over to you folks.
Thank you. So, I'm Barry Gibbs, and I'm the Chair of the Museum Board.
It's on. Should go red, it's a little person.
There you go.
When it goes red, it's on. Okay, I'll start again. Usually, red is on. I'm Barry Gibbs, I'm the Chair of the Museum Board, and Bill Kells is the Executive Director of the museum. And with us today, we also have the entire museum board. Earl Taylor, who's the Vice Chair, Betty Horr, who's Secretary, Tom Carey, Mitch Forster, Margaret Lane, Val Ritson, Cynthia Wanamaker, and of course, Candace. We also have, from the Friends of the Museum, I noticed that we have Bonnie Downey and Ross Dell. They're both on the board of the Friends, and there are, I think, some others here as well. And also, we also have Jordan Wallace, who's the other staff member at the museum. Success at the museum is only going to happen if we have a strong collaboration between the museum board, museum staff, and the Friends of the museum. And we actually had a meeting last Thursday night of that group to do, share ideas and to look at planning for the future. So, we are actively working together. Anyway, that's as introduction. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about an issue that's really important to the museum. Our mission is to eliminate our history through collections, preservation, and sharing of thought-provoking exhibits and stories of Clarets Home and District. People, local people, some don't live here anymore, give up ownership of items, artifacts, documents, photographs, that are important to their family but are historically significant, and they want to make sure that those continue to exist into the future. So, they give them to museums, they give up their ownership, and therefore, museums have a public trust responsibility to provide the best care they can for that collection, both artifacts and archives. And care of that collection means controlling things like light, temperature, humidity. It also means how we handle the objects, or whatever they are, and how we store them. And so, currently, we store museum artifacts and archives, et cetera, in a variety of places, not in one place. We use the station attic, which is obviously not temperature-controlled, nor is it easy to work up there. I can't stand up up there. So, and we have a large number of artifacts in that, in there. The station basement, we had a flood there in August, so I was going to say, there's a bunch of artifacts there, but there aren't. They're no longer there. We've moved them all to Mackin Hall. There were at least 70 volunteer hours involved in helping to move all that stuff. We never called on any outside contractors at all. We also have three outside storage units, that's cost $4,000 a year. We have outside storage at the townyard and in the museum grounds, and obviously, there's no protection from the weather at all on items that are outside. In the exhibit hall, we have storage spread out through the building. Now that we've got control of the light, we've turned the fluorescent lights off, now I would say we have good conditions for storage in the exhibit hall, although it's limited. So, the bottom line is that most of the storage we have doesn't meet the proper standards of care. And this has been identified as a need for quite some time, at least going back to 2012 in museum board meeting notes and strategic plans. We're seeing the quality and quantity of storage has been identified as an important issue, and it's one of the six priorities we have in our current strategic plan. You may not be aware, but new donations are received almost weekly. The museum continues to receive high-quality items with strong provenance to Clarets Home and area. Of particular concern are some larger items, which will likely be coming to the museum. We have no place to store them, or to exhibit them, or to display them, sorry. So, the museum has run out of storage space and out of display space for larger items, and most of the current storage space does not meet standards. So, we're here today to talk to you about a proposal, and Bill's going to go through that to help alleviate this situation.
Thank you. Once again, I would also like to say thank you to Mayor, Council and Administration for having us here tonight to present. Before I get to the actual proposal in the building, I'd firstly like to follow along on what Barry addressed in regards to the flood. It is one of the worst nightmares realized for a museum, coming into three inches of water in the basement and humidity so high that mold contamination set in on many of the artifacts. Twenty-two sections of metal shelving were cleaned and moved off-site to off-site storage. Approximately 1,350 artifacts were relocated to off-site storage, with those that were exposed all cleaned by hand, and I have to say, with a lot of the volunteers that you see in the gallery tonight were a part of that, including Candace, who helped out with that as well. Pretty much all of September and October staff time, both Jordan and I were devoted to flood recovery, and it's not done yet. Looking to hire temporary staff to assist us in November and December, and most likely, our time as well will still continue on to work on mitigating that. According to Doug Leeds, it's not the first time that the basement flooded. It was flooded in the 1980s, so we will no longer be using the station basement for artifact storage. I'd also like to take a quick moment to mention that with the recent events at the station, the museum board at its October meeting endorsed a plan to do a full review of the artifact collection, both in storage and on display in the museum. We have an incredible collection of artifacts, as is evident in the exhibit hall and station. We've got lots of amazing comments on the collection that we have on display. Over the years, since 1969, however, a few have crept in which don't belong, and that becomes more evident recently. We need to review for damaged or incomplete artifacts, for duplicates, for artifacts with no relevance to Clarets Home, called provenance, and assess, do we have the resources and ability to properly care for some artifacts? We have recently hired a collections and visitor experience supervisor who will devote the majority of their time in the off-season to undertaking this task. Working with the accession committee, they will identify and deaccession using professionally accepted museum guidelines any redundant artifacts from the collection and address them using Alberta museums associations' professionally accepted standards and guidelines for museums. Although not anticipated to be a lot, this is seen as helping to address our storage needs. And now, I would like to go to the proposal, and familiar with the council, it's our second presentation on this building, multi-purpose storage building. And in the background, on the bottom of page two and at the top of page three, the first was almost four years ago to the day, on October 26, 2020. In that presentation, we addressed two specific needs, programming space and artifact storage. That presentation was not successful in gaining support because of the perceived cost. In that proposal, we had an entire second floor for programming with bathrooms, commercial kitchen, table and chair storage. In this proposal, the entire second floor programming has been eliminated and replaced instead with storage mezzanine occupying approximately one-third of the building. We have also gone from a conventional stud-framed building to a pole building, further reducing initial costs, same as the buildings, and we referred to it in the proposal that Doug Leeds has on his property, similar size and style. As a reminder to everybody, previous needs on the bottom of page three, at present, we have off-site artifact storage in three separate locations. At the town, Public Works Yard, in three storage containers, and now, unfortunately, out in Mackin Hall as well, so we're spread out a little bit. This building will allow us to have easy access to onsite storage and to house the entire artifact collection on the museum site. And moving on to page four and five, the proposed project. It's going to be dependent on fundraising, and both the board and the Friends of the Museum Society are committed to fundraising. And depending on how successful, the building could be built in its entirety at the start, or it could be phased like the Agriplex is. It's, the building's style is a nod to our agricultural history. Everybody knows that the economic basin, Clarets Home is heavily reliant on agriculture and all the businesses that support it, and the building's design as a red and black metal barn-shaped building is a nod to that. The building's size is 40 by 80, with a 12 by 60 length addition and a 1,280 square-foot mezzanine, and we have included solar panels along the east top section to help offset utility costs. Page six, page six are the concept drawings, and in our last proposal, we had sort of hand-drawn sketches, but for this proposal, we actually had professionally drawn concept drawings and floor pans done as well. And the page six, the concept drawings, east side concept drawing is of second. You see the workshop up and over door in the foreground, and a large equipment door into the vehicle storage area, vehicle storage area, sorry. The bottom drawing shows false barn doors and loft doors on the exhibit hall on the north end, or at the exhibit hall's north end. And page seven, concept drawings, that's on the west side, and it shows open lane two and a double man door for pedestrian main entrance, and that's close to the exhibit hall entrance as well. Some discussions have taken place recently on possible storage needs of other town departments, which could be addressed by adding smaller up-and-over doors on the lane two... which could be addressed by adding smaller up-and-over doors on the lane two on this building to create separate bays, and that could possibly be a cost shared with the town, but that's something that's very preliminary in the early stages of discussion. Page eight, the floor plan, main floor, is showing a large vehicle storage area on the north end, which is unheated. Artifact shelving storage and table and chair storage in the central portion of the building, and then workshop and washrooms at the south end, all heated, and workshop is deemed important, as there is absolutely no space in the exhibit hall or the station, not that you could ever do it, to build exhibits or paint or clean artifacts, those sorts of things, so the workshop is deemed as important for those reasons. Page nine, upper mezzanine is an unheated storage area. And then page ten, the location of the building on the site. And it looks a little bit deceiving, and it occupies quite a bit of the site, but if you sort of look at the exhibit hall, it only comes out to the edge of the concrete on the entry into the exhibit hall lobby, so it doesn't occupy a lot of the site, there's still a lot of site left for other events. And then page eleven is the quote for the metal building, and as I learned earlier, it's a building similar to what Doug Leeds has on his property, and several of our board members went out and had a look, and we used the same company to quote it, and the quote came in at two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-plus GST with no concrete included. And we've had reference to the earlier quotes on concrete floor at around fifty thousand dollars, so it would still bring the building in under three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So that sort of completes my summary on the drawings and the proposal, and I would just like to say in closing, as Executive Director, I cannot stress enough the benefit to both the museum and the community that this building will represent, not only addressing current museum storage needs, but opening up the opportunity to accept larger agricultural pieces which represent such a significant part of Clare's Home's history. And now I'd like to turn it back over to Barry.
So here, we're here today to ask for a couple of things. We are requesting approval to utilize a portion of the museum grounds for the multi-use building. That's one request. The second one is the request to allow the museum board to develop and implement a fundraising plan to complete this important community project, and we would appreciate any in-kind support of town staff and equipment towards completing this goal, but that's our two asks at this time. So if there's any questions, we'd be glad to, happy to answer them. Mike, any questions?
Nope, all good. I appreciate the time.
Craig?
No, no, everything's all laid out, explained quite well, so everything I've long known has been answered, so.
Good. Counselor Kettle?
Sorry, thanks for your efforts in all of this, this is really well laid out. My only question was, a lot of this is going to be unheated space, right, just storage space?
Yeah.
How does that dovetail in with the requirements to, you know, have climate control and keep track of things and all that, or maybe it's different items that are going in that space?
Yeah, a lot of the items that we're looking at in the unheated areas are going to be farm-related tools and equipment, and a lot of those are pretty robust and actually live most of their lives outside anyway, so they're not really gonna be affected the way some of our more fragile artifacts are. And we still have artifact storage inside the exhibit hall, which is heated and proper light control, so we're actually channeling the more sensitive objects in that area, and so we'll pick and choose where things go, but yeah, it'll be adequate. And there is, in the central portion of the main floor, there's the heating area for some artifact storage, and also table and chair storage, so we'll be able to accommodate some artifacts in there as well.
Great. My only other question was, have you given thoughts as to what future use of the basement area is going to be now in the main area? I've gotta think that through.
That's a great question, actually, and we're not alone in having basements flooded in museums, and since ours flooded and the word got out, we've heard all kinds of horror stories. One from High River Museum, and High River Museum now use their basement for exhibit materials, for gift shop, and tourist information center brochure racks, all those kinds of storage. We do need some storage for janitorial supplies, so we're actually looking at putting janitorial supplies down there as well, so it will be utilized, it won't be sitting empty. One of the other things that I would like to mention about the basement is there are no windows in the basement, there's no ventilation in the basement, which compounded the mold situation, and so it's just not gonna happen, we can't subject them to that.
This new building's gonna have a washroom, and there's gonna have to be services put in?
Do you want to answer that? Do you want me to answer it? We have talked about site services, and the building, we'll most likely go ahead in a staged approach, and so the piping and all those sorts of things for services would be put in initially, and not necessarily hooked up, but could be hooked up in the future, but the consideration for those going in when the floor is being poured is definitely something we're looking at.
Any other questions? You're good?
I'm good.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Always the full board shows up.
We got a great group.
It's amazing, and you do good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pointed a good board.
Action items. Delegation response, Massive Energy.
So at the last council meeting, there was a delegation from a company called Massive Energy, and they're working on a new project called a virtual power plant. Council heard that information in the presentation about that group, and they're looking to partner with municipalities, to have municipalities house batteries in their facilities, some of their larger facilities, and those batteries could potentially be used to power the grid at certain times. So there was some information on battery cost, and how much selling the energy could offset the cost, and potentially how much money selling that energy could make the municipality. That was presented last week. We haven't, administratively, we haven't done any more research into this delegation, but we wanted to bring it back to you, to council, to see if there is an interest to know more, we'd have to ask some more questions, and kind of get an idea, if council was interested, what the best locations would be, and kind of what their proposal would look like for Clare's Home. So any questions or any desire from council to hear more from this group?
The only question I have is if they, obviously we'd have to find out what some of the numbers would look like, like I like the idea of the arena, try to lower some of the costs there if, if it's feasible kind of thing, right, like there's no sense in doing all the work, if it's not gonna make sense, but I wouldn't mind a few numbers to see if it's even worth chasing down.
Mike?
Yeah, no, it's, it's one of those things that, it was good information, I just don't know if we're at that point right now to, whether it would benefit us as a whole to dive into it.
The proposal, as I understood it, was, was not a one-to-one kind of thing, so we wouldn't put a battery in, for instance, at the arena and then gain benefit at the arena. I, I think the battery, as I understood it, would just be part of a whole virtual thing that at some point they might be able to sell some energy into the grid, and so providing some funding to offset revenues, however we want to do it. I, I, I think I agree with Counselor Kettle, very early days on this, I classify myself as a pretty large skeptic until, you know, I would see some numbers, and I'm not, don't think I'm that interested in having administration spin their wheels on this just yet, maybe just kind of keep a distant eyeball, it'd be where I'd be at.
My feelings are, this is one of those nice-to-haves, but I don't consider it a need, and I think we have a lot more important needs right now. So I agree with Counselor Kettle, so I don't believe we should be making administration delve into this any deeper. Need a motion? So we can let Tristan know, we'll stay in touch.
Yeah, we'll, we'll connect with him.
Thank you. Okay, other government correspondence. Town of Fort McLeod. Abe?
So with Town of Fort McLeod is holding their forty-first annual Santa Claus parade, and so this is an invitation to mayor and council to join them in the horse-drawn carriage, that is on Saturday, November thirtieth. The theme this year is a snow globe Christmas. So the parade starts at eleven, and they are asking that council joins them by ten We will be sending the parade float, Green?
Yeah. Mel Lister's gonna take the float.
I've already accepted an invitation, but it's open to everybody, so if anybody else wants to come. Counselor Ross?
If you could guarantee me plus twenty.
Right.
Sadly, I don't think you can.
Knock on wood, I got all plucky last year.
Yeah.
It was nice.
It was nice.
Okay. We advise Fort McLeod. Thank you. Local correspondence. Abe?
So some correspondence here from Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, they are sending out a publication, pardon me, looks like it's an annual publication, and just raising awareness and funds for MAD Canada's essential programs, such as education seminars in schools aimed at young, new drivers. So they are looking for sponsors for this publication, anywhere from a hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, which gets the sponsor support listing, to a cover, which is twenty-two-hundred dollars. You know, if we've donated to this one, past...
Questions? Discussion?
Where are we at on our budget till the end of the year?
We're just about...
It's pretty close, isn't it?
As far as grants go.
Yeah.
We need, have some room in our advertising budget.
Anyone interested? Mike?
I, I'm with Counselor Keith there with the idea that I think we're near our end of our budget allowance, but I mean, always interested, I just don't think this is one that we need right now.
Yeah, I very much support Matt, but I think this one's gotta maybe fit into our next-year budget.
Okay, take that for information. Royal Canadian Legion.
The Legion is putting on a Remembrance Day service this year, I think it's been absent from town for a couple of years, and so there's some correspondence here for council that there will be a service, obviously Monday, November eleventh, from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty at the community center. And I think mayor's already been, mayor's already been in contact, received the first poppy last Friday.
Yeah.
And will be laying the wreath.
Yes. I encourage everyone to come out to the service. Thank you. Request for decision, five D point one.
The Clare's Home recently formed Bark Park, Clare's Home Bark Park have requested a letter of support from, for the town. They are applying for an edible tree grant through Tree Canada, and the grant would be used to purchase edible trees, shrubs, planting materials, and tree water bags for the fenced Bark Park on Patterson Heights. A little bit of information on Tree Canada, since 2012, Tree Canada has completed over two-hundred-and-seventy-nine edible trees projects and planted over twenty-one-thousand fruit and nut trees in the community across the country. So eligible projects can receive up to ten thousand dollars for purchasing and planting edible trees and shrubs, site preparation, tree maintenance, planting materials, and developing education materials. So Bark Park will be concentrating on trees and shrubs that are drought-resistant, fruit-bearing, and hardy for the zone. I guess some examples that they could plant would be apple, plum, Saskatoon, choke cherry, apricot, or apricot, depending on where you raised, blackberry, black currants, elderberry, and cariganas. So they aren't looking for any, any funds from council, just a letter of support?
They've requested a thousand-liter tote?
Yes, they have as well, yeah.
Questions? Concerns? Discussion?
As long as they, I'm fine with it, as long as they research which trees they're gonna put over there, because choke cherry leaves, not the fruit, but the leaves of a choke cherry branch are not good for dogs, so as long as they take that into consideration, whichever trees they're allowed to plant, that they're, all parts of the plant are
Not sure on cariganas either, I'm a big fan.
Those little pokey little pods.
But they're not, I'm...
You're good?
I'm good.
Motion?
I'll make a motion and write a letter of support to the Bark Park.
Question?
Move by Counselor Zimmer to write a letter of support to the Bark Park Board for the edible tree grant through Tree Canada.
All in favor? Five D point two. Abe?
So another tree grant, this one, the town is looking for, pardon me, a letter of support through the Tree Mendis Communities Grant, also through Tree Canada, and we are looking at planting and... And we are looking at planting and increasing the urban forest and getting some fund, some funds together to purchase some trees in various locations throughout the town, the Frog Creek So there's a diverse group of trees that thrive in wet, moist planting conditions with alkaline soil. Plantings are also drought resistant. For this area to thrive as an ecological wetland, shade trees and bush trees are required, bushes are required as well. So in 2018, the town did plant a lot of trees and shrubs up there, and some of them didn't take, so we're looking at replenishing some of the trees up there. Millennium Ballpark, we lost a lot of columnar poplars on the west, and so we're looking to add some shrubs. At the sign entry and shade trees between the diamonds, Moffett Park, more shade trees. These are all options of what we'd be pursuing. Disc golf course, full sun, drought resistant, deer resistant varieties with large shaped canopies would be ideal. Kin Trail, some low rooting trees, bushes due to underground infrastructure. Willow Dog Park, cariganas along 8th Street West, some shade and canopy trees and Centennial. Some shrubs and trees out there as well, so.
Questions, discussion? Counselor Meister?
Again, I think this is probably a good idea, but I would like to take the cotony asters out of that list, because once they get the oyster shell scale, it's impossible to eradicate it, and then they just look dead and gross the whole time. And then you see there's the cariganas again on 8th Street.
I didn't know that about cotony aster.
Oh, such a pain.
Any other questions, discussion?
Ones out by Millennial, are we putting them in a new spot?
Well, there will be some for a new spot. Some new areas at the entrance and between the diamonds. That's a good question, though, Counselor Zimmer. I, I think the idea is to put some shrubs in that same area where those trees have died off.
Okay.
Would you prefer...
Just because it's come up a bunch of times about sidewalks up in that area, right? So I mean, now that the trees that are there are dead, it'd be the ideal time to move everything or like redevelop that to maybe a lot for a sidewalk in the future.
Okay. We could look, we could look into that.
So administration could bring that back to us?
Counselor Kettle?
Counselor Kettle?
I, I just thought there might also be an opportunity to engage some local experts. I, I don't know, maybe they already have, excuse me, in this project, but we do have some folks in town who are arborist kind of thing, and they may have some good information on locations and varieties and all sorts of things, so.
Yeah, we, we can definitely ask them to reach out. Staff did get some training last year on kind of what's appropriate for the area. Yep. They all said it was really good training, what's appropriate, and how to ensure as much success when you're planting. We were doing a number of things wrong, but there's, so they actually learned a lot, and one of them was, again, appropriate bushes and trees for the area.
So we could be okay with, with writing the letter of support for the grant?
Oh, yeah.
And move that today and, and we can figure out exactly how and where. I'll make that motion if we're good with that.
Thank you. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to write a letter of support for the Recreation Department to apply for the Tremendous Communities Tree Grant for the Town of Claire's Home.
All in favor? Next. 5 point D, point 3. Abe?
So the Old Fashioned Christmas is scheduled to take place on December 6th. And there is a request here to close down the downtown parking lot as well as the alley to the south of the parking lot for the event. You recall that last year there was some activity over at Amundson? And I think they're looking to the, the downtown thought that, that maybe pulled potential shoppers away a little bit, so they are looking to have the Old Fashioned Christmas at its previous location where it has historically been, the downtown parking lot. So they're looking for, for approval from council to close that. They have also discussed some of the activities. I think that's in the, there's a letter here, including the lighting of the tree in the present, I think it's by the Citizens of the Year, and have requested council to be in attendance for that as well.
Discussion, questions?
I think that's a good move to bring it back downtown, to have the festive season there. Everybody enjoyed it.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to approve the closure of the downtown parking lot and the east slash west alley, and to provide barricades, et cetera, for the Old Fashioned Christmas event on December 6th, 2024.
All in favor? Next. Financial report. Statement of operations. Abe?
So these are the statement of operations for August and September, end of August, end of September, on the agenda, and our new Director of Corporate Services, Jennifer Place, is here to answer any questions that council has? Any questions on anything or have a discussion? Yeah, you want to come up, Jen?
I can't get my computer working, it's lost all my memory. And I think this one's basic, you're so...
I just want to introduce Jennifer Place, our new Director of Corporate Director. Services.
Thank you. Thank you.
We know they would turn on us.
Any questions, concerns?
Schedule 1 and Schedule 2.
They should be attached later on, and they include, I think, some details. I believe the department I highlighted was agriculture and recreation.
Yep. So if you recall, council, maybe four or five months ago, were requesting additional breakdowns of some of the areas of the budget. And so previously, we provided some information on administration, the costs and the revenues, and broke that one down. Council was getting questions from the public, and so that's, this is an extension of those reports. That's what those schedules are.
Any other questions, concerns? Mike?
No, all looks good, and I really appreciate the breakdown and transparency for the community.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, welcome to the team. I wasn't there to say hi.
Thank you.
So any motions for both, please?
So we have statement of operations for September also, which we have any questions Okay, can we have a motion to accept the financial report? Counselor Ross?
Already got typed.
Do you? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended August 31st, 2024, as presented.
All in favor? Okay.
And then September?
And, oh, both. Oh. Counselor Cutler's making a motion to approve that? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended September 30th, 2024, as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, next, 5F, CAO report. Abe?
So this is a report to council on, from several of the departments and several of the staff, on some of the activities of the administration over the past month. Any questions from anybody?
Looks good. Thank you. 5G council committee report. I would like to congratulate Counselor Meister on pictures instead of words.
I didn't have Wi-Fi for my computers. I was like, we're going to have to take this, sorry.
Any questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler?
Yeah, again, I apologize not being there in person, but next meeting I will have a deep update on Miss Salisbury. We've had a couple of good meetings in the last couple of weeks and stuff with their strategic planning and their AGM and stuff, so I'm looking forward to share that next time.
Thank you. Counselor, 5H, counselor resolution status. Questions, concerns?
Everything says complete. We've got to add some more work here, eh?
No.
They're taking November, December off.
I have my mic on and not, sorry.
We didn't have your mic on, but I still heard the word "no" I think.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Information items, could I have, did everybody read them? Could I have a motion to accept the information items?
All motion to accept the information items as presented.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Perfect. Could I have a motion to go in camera, please? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to go in camera at 8:03 PM for the following items: business interests of a third party, FOIP Section 16; B, business interests of a third party, FOIP Section 16; C, confidential evaluations, FOIP Section 19; local public body confidences, FOIP Section 23.
All in favor? Approved. We are now in camera, camera off, please. Motion to come out of in camera?
I'll make a motion to come out of in camera.
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to count out of in camera at 8:38 PM.
All in favor? Okay, now we need a motion on the first in camera item. Counselor Carlson?
So moved by Counselor Carlson to enter into a purchase agreement to transfer a subdivided portion of land adjacent to 5421 Second Street East to be sold as is, where is, with all costs of the subdivision, any required remediation, and transfer costs to be borne by the purchaser.
All in favor? Motion for the second in camera item?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to enter into a real estate contract with Melxwell Capital Realty Claire's Home for a term of six months as proposed to sell the Pine Place lots with the development condition of development approval within, when, within one year from title transfer.
All in favor? Item 3. Could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Margaret Lane to the museum board.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to reappoint Margaret Lane to the Claire's Home District Museum Board.
All in favor? Motion, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to that this meeting adjourned at 8:41 PM.
All in favor? Approved. Camera off?